Good afternoon, welcome to the Athens Planning Commission meeting. It is Thursday, November 2nd, 2023 at approximately 12:03 PM. First order of business is to establish a quorum, and looking up and down the dais, we do have quorum. The other thing we need to do is administer oath. If there's anybody who's going to be speaking before the planning commission today, if you would just raise your right hand, do you swear that everything you're going to be presenting before this body is honest and truthful? All right. Disposition of the minutes for October 5th of 2023. Commissioners have all seen this beforehand. Does anybody, I know that Commissioner Kotowski, you were absent for this, so you abstain from this, but any questions, comments, notes?
I move that we accept the minutes from the fifth.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. The minutes have been adopted. Cases, we don't have any cases today. Communications, we don't have any communications either. Reports, anything to report from any of the commissioners? Hearing nothing? Opportunity for citizens to speak on items not covered under today's agenda. Is there anybody that would like to speak on things not covered? I see Mr. Delak, you're shaking your head no. Usually you are the one who does speak to us on items, so I will take that no as nothing new. Announcement's another business. This is the main thing that we are going to be doing today, and it is engaging with American Structure Point, who is here with us this afternoon, discussing the Stimson Avenue corridor. And so, if you would just introduce yourself.
Sure, if I could take just a quick moment.
Yes, you can.
Sure, and so just for our viewers at home, before the team from American Structure Point gets into this, I'd like to just remind all the planning commission members about, you know, why we're doing this. Ten months ago, we were funded through Ohio Southeast, which is the arm of Jobs Ohio that works in this area for a technical assistance grant to allow us to look at conditions in a particular portion of our city where we wanted to see economic redevelopment and improvement. And we selected the Stimson Avenue corridor as a business corridor that's important to the city, and since then, there's been a team of both kind of the steering committee as well as a wider team of stakeholders that have worked with American Structure Point, who was the procured planner for, by Ohio Southeast to do this technical assistance, to create this initiative. And understanding that there's going to be recommendations on zoning changes that ultimately City Council will have to accept, this planning commission has to take action before we would forward that to City Council. And so, we thought it appropriate that the first public body that we present this plan to is the planning commission versus coming to City Council because of that step that's necessary for the planning commission to take. You know, clearly, planning commission has looked at our corridors for a long time around the city and made recommendations over time to improve those corridors, and we see this as just an extension of that. But this has been a really robust effort, and we're thrilled to death, and certainly the team will introduce themselves.
How much is the fun?
For the study?
No, how much, sorry, how much is available from Jobs Ohio?
No, no, it's paid for, it's done. It was not funding us, that then we paid them, it was just paying them direct.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
Just to kind of elaborate a little bit further on what Commissioner Stone was mentioning, I want to recognize some individuals who are here in the room today. Molly Fitzgerald from the Athens County Economic Development Council was instrumental in pulling this together. Shawna Wolf is here as representing Ohio University. Shawna has certainly been involved, and then we have representation from Sunday Creek Horizons as well. So, again, it's truly been a team effort with American Structure Point. It's really been quite the journey, meeting almost monthly for quite some time, and it's been really fun watching the whole corridor, Stimson Avenue corridor plan kind of really flesh itself out over time. The floor is yours.
Thank you, do you need any state address for the record too, or just name? Just wondering. Sorry, a former public sector employee, I always go through the motions. My name is Matthew Rourke, I am the Planning and Economic Development Group Leader with American Structure Point. So, our firm by and large is, we do a lot of engineering work, a lot of engineering road designs, bridges, those things, but our group specializes in long-range planning studies, zoning ordinance amendments, economic development, all those things, which really all those kind of facets, landscape architecture, all came together to formulate the plan that we're about to go through. And I think the mayor and Andy, once, first of all, thank you so much for your participation and guidance through this effort, it was really helpful, a lot of great insights, but summed it up really great. It was an opportunity that came through a grant received by the Vonovich School, then to Buckeye Hills through Rise Ohio, which it funded this study and multiple studies throughout the eight county region that they serve. And this, as we were going through the effort, this Stimson Avenue had a lot of great pieces, it also had an opportunity zone kind of in place for part of it, which was a big part of this, was the impetus for us thinking about this corridor. And as we dug into it, found, man, what a great thing, it's already been so much happening along this corridor, what a great corridor to kind of really dig into and add to that, really embellish what's already been started there. So, I think there was a couple of themes that came out of this, the study overview process, just what we're going to talk about today, and then key themes and stakeholders. The one that really sticks out to my mind as a theme that's not in the plan itself is that there's already been so much thought and work done here. And so, what we really tried to do was embellish that, add to that, in particular, all the investments in infrastructure on Stimson Avenue already, made a very conscious and conscientious effort to say, all right, how do we add to that, not sort of rethink it, redo it, because you already have these great sidewalks in place, the utilities are there, the rain gardens are there, so what can we do to help make this a corridor that's even more embellished and more of a fun, you know, entertainment district to hang out in? So, that's really how we got to where we were, as we started working with the city and talking through the process. Just a quick overview of our process, we like to do these in three phases. Phase one is educate, so we were here at the beginning of the year, had a lot of stakeholder meetings with business owners, landowners, brokers, folks that work in economic development circles, to just kind of talk through what they see as the perceived challenges, benefits, really get our minds wrapped around that and understand also the data behind it. So, we hear a lot of comments, we like to apply data to that, and I'll go through a little bit of that in a minute. The second phase, explore, the mayor mentioned those monthly meetings, spent a lot of time with our landscape architects, looking at a few specific sites that are in the plan and saying, hey, what can we do along Stimson Avenue, and really extended towards Carpenter, to embellish, come up with some new ideas, some near-term, some long-term, but really just ways to make this a more engaging environment for people to explore, walk around, and that's the heart of what we're going to go through. And then the last phase to where we are now is really getting the plan written, working through those edits, getting it ready, and coming up with the recommendations, and the ones we'll talk a little bit in some specificity are critical past strategies, those are kind of our near-term ones. Plan organization itself, this is how the plan's organized as you read it. We're not going to present it quite in this order, I think it's a little easier when we go through these to talk about one section at a time, and then also the recommendations that come out of this section rather than make you remember what I said 30 minutes ago, when we get to that point in the presentation. But as you read through the plan itself, we start with some introduction overview, what's the purpose of the study? Plan goals, I want to make sure I highlight these only because you'll see them, they're the themes that reverberate through the whole plan, it's not just about one section and relating to that, there's some overarching themes. And then each plan section, as we found out the topics, has its own objectives and strategies. Something unique to this plan, I mentioned economic development, as we want to think through some high-level ideas and what could mean to pay for some of these improvements. So, we did a high-level fiscal review, which was essentially looking at the assessed values, potentially what that could mean for growth over time, and then the critical past strategies come at the end. There's a lot of strategies that come out of an effort like this, we like to summarize the ones that we think are going to be near-term, next zero to five years, that you're going to want to look at maybe implementing in that timeframe. So, with that, this, just to show you what that looks like in the plan itself, each section, the plan has the corridor goals, each section will have the ones that are relevant to that section restated, so as you go through the document, that's what that means, relevant goals, and then objectives and strategies. And then, at the very end of the document are the critical past strategies, they look something like this. And so, I just want to highlight that as you go through the plan, that's how these things all tie together. These critical past strategies, just to mention, are based on the strategies you see in each section, we just basically pull one of those out, in this case, looking at the zoning ordinance and assign some further detailed steps, since we're considering this a near-term effort, these are the next things you're going to want to do beyond just the strategy itself. So, we like, as we do an effort like this, we really like to provide some extra guidance while we can. Any questions on that, before I jump right into the plan content itself, how it's organized, or anything like that? Great. Before I get too far in this, at any time, if there's something you'd like me to restate or focus on, or if you just have a question, feel free, interrupt me, this can be fairly conversational, we don't have to worry about going all the way through the process and then waiting till the end of that, so just feel free to go ahead and interrupt me, and we go through it. But I mentioned the stakeholder meetings as we jump in, phase one, this is all about that data gathering. What we like to do is take copious and bounded notes, we do each one of these, and then go back and kind of reframe it and rethink it and theme it. And when we do that, we can see some very clear sort of topics that sort of rise to the surface. In this case, seven. Flexible zoning came up in reference to, you know, potential parking requirements, setbacks, building heights, where residents can and can't be permitted, all those things along the corridor. That came up, and I should say, this is from all the stakeholder groups, it's not just one or the others, it really came from all told, especially when we start to see that 26 comments were tagged with that, that was something everybody was thinking about. And these also form the basis of the plan sections, you know, we don't go out and do all this stakeholder engagement, come up with all these ideas, and then say, all right, we're going to mush this into some kind of preset theme of topics, we try to tailor and customize each plan based on what we hear from the community. So, the sections that are in there reflect a lot of what we hear there, or even name the same thing. Beyond flexible zoning, unique physical environment, and what this really focused around was Stimson Avenue, and we'll get into some of the data in a minute, but it represented this opportunity, this sort of great connection and transfer between maybe more student-focused areas to where more permanent residents live year-round, especially on the north side of Stimson. So, that kind of became a great guiding purpose for us when we went through this, and also really, how do we kind of create a unique environment that maybe caters to both those subsets of residents? Experience is not just retail, this one's all about just making sure we have a whole experience here, it's not just going to one store to shop or one restaurant, we want to get people out, walk them around. High land cost expectations, this one probably came a little more from the development community, and the idea here was that, you know, anybody can sell property in Athens, we think, and if they're going to turn it into more apartments, you could do a pretty good return on that, which is sort of driving up land costs a little bit, so how do we think through that? Surrounding residents, really making sure the community has, you know, as these things develop over time, has their, say they're not surprised. Bike pedestrian connectivity was a pretty important one, and then parking, you know, whenever we do an effort like this, parking inevitably comes up, where's everybody going to park? And so, with that, kind of following the order that these are presented in the plan themselves, unique physical environment, we heard a lot about north versus south of Stimson Avenue, how that plays out, challenges, making sure that we're talking to residents. And if you see the chart here, what we've done is present who we heard this from, so that represents either developers, property owners, real estate professionals, those are the groups that kind of commented on these things. We want to make sure we get to know the property owners, and really kind of that rental versus homeownership thing, that came up a lot throughout this process, making sure that this is, Stimson Avenue is an environment for all citizens, we're not just catering to one section or the other. And so, we heard this feedback, and we said, all right, well, you know, is that, that's a perception out there, and that's what we're hearing, but what does that really mean to folks in the data? And so, we looked at it, south of Stimson Avenue versus north of Stimson Avenue, and the data kind of really bore out what we were hearing. Median income changes drastically, average age of a person changes drastically, housing types, you know, whether it be occupied or rental, so I mean, we basically drew a line right down the center line of Stimson Avenue, and in the Carpenter, looked at demographics on both sides, and everything we heard through the stakeholders, it bore out through the data, so I wanted to highlight that for you today. And it really informed a lot of what you see in the plan for the recommendations. Resident engagement, this is something that came up in relation to this, we just want to make sure, and as you go through the plan, it's in there, all the communications with the public, you know, as things change, as you do modifications, or in some of the enhances we talked about, we want to highlight this now, because I think this slide really, it really highlights that, we've got two subsets of people here, we want to make sure everybody understands what's going on, and that there's buy-in as we go, you know, from this phase into the future. So, it didn't, this, I want to make sure I'm clear that this is future-looking, it's not what we did now, you know, as this plan moves forward, as things make sure we continue to speak to the residents, get regular communications out there, meetings like this for sure, have workshops, open houses, especially some of the bigger improvements we've proposed, and then keep updating that demographic analysis. I can tell you from doing this for a long time, especially since COVID, things are changing, the markets are changing, what factoids people are interested in are changing, and so, business models, you know, all those things, so it's something you're going to, you know, we have this nice snapshot in time now, but want to make sure we keep updating that as we go through. A lot of what we did from a physical analysis, we started thinking about it and realized there's these very specific zones, and we wanted to either enhance or preserve those, we call them transects in this plan, this became the basis of the zoning ordinance amendments, we'll talk about in a little bit, but also really the basis of our existing conditions analysis, which was there's mixed-use areas, and maybe they get extended, there are single-family areas, there's neighborhood commercial zones that we called it, which are more your retail, your one-story, two-story office shops kind of, and I wanted to highlight that one specifically because we wanted to make sure there was some sort of buffer between any improvements and bigger development, taller development, south of Stimson Avenue, and the residents that live in single-family neighborhoods in the north. So, this was very important as we went through the process, is making sure that there is a transition zone here. And so, this is probably a little bigger than it would be if you went out and looked at all the existing land uses now, but that was very intentional to create a buffer, and so, that was very important through this process. The other thing we talked about a lot in relation to that is the apartment piece again, you know, if any, these could probably all get bought up and turned into apartments, you know, if the development community just did what it does, you know, based on the market, we want to make sure there's retail available for everybody in town too. So, really serving two goals, I think mixed-use zones are an extension of what happens in Uptown, and there's some room that for, here for that too. Multi-family zone is maybe town homes, maybe apartments, there's direction in here to that. A couple other things I want to make sure we highlight on this map that are really important is the preservation of employment, job creators, there's some industrial uses in the area. This plan looks at making sure those are maintained, maybe some upgraded facades and the look and feel of it, but, you know, there's some really good job creation happening here, we don't want to get rid of that. And then, definitely don't want to lose the connections to the open space and recreation along the river, and even potentially, as we look at some of the extension of some of those ideas to Ohio's, or University of Ohio, excuse me, its campus. So, here, this map highlights a couple of things, first of all, the thicker white outline is the boundary of the study area, that was really our charge here, we wanted to look at these very specific parcels and how to enhance them. The other piece is, we went through this, we looked at the existing land uses, and said, where are the opportunities for enhancement? And so, that's what this map represents, you can see there, and this was important to us, they're sort of fingerprinted all up and down the corridor from east to west, you know, there's a number of different places where we could look to enhance, and as we kind of explain this next concept, that becomes really important to us. We like to do something called the Power of 10+, which is, when you're trying to create a district, an environment, even a regional attraction, there's a kind of a critical mass, so to speak, of interest points, of places to go and hang out, or just sit at a park bench, shade areas, concert halls, you name it, the individual pieces themselves aren't as important as, you just want to have a collection of them, and you want to do it in a way that's so that people understand you're kind of in a unique place. And so, when we looked at that previous map and started thinking through this framework, we're saying, okay, yeah, that's starting to make some sense, how do we elaborate that? And it really kind of formed the foundational element of, let's create these cool elements all up and down the street, we have, you know, different placemaking elements, we call them, could be pop-up shops and existing parking lots, something we'll talk about in a little bit, there's plenty of surface lots out there, are there existing spaces, parking spaces that maybe become a temple temporary, excuse me, parklet, we call them, out in front, you can just occupy that for a month or two, the restaurant nearby could use it for outdoor dining perhaps, you could just have it as a seating area, but art installations, I'm a big fan of temporary art installations, personally, like create a platform where you know that is going to be, but a community I used to work for, they had a park right on their river, and every summer it would change to new sculptures that artists would do, and the artists were doing it because they wanted to sell their piece, there was a price tag with them, but the thing I loved about it is you've got this constant evolution and recreation of new sculptures every year, so it's a whole nother set of reasons to come down and see the sculptures, and it really worked, everybody, those first three, four weeks that the new art pieces were in, would come down and walk through that park and look at, so recreating something like that up and down, east to west, along the corridor, bike share stations, we have the great path along the river now, let's take advantage of that and really connect that to this, streetscaping and amenities, shading, more landscaping, even more than we have there, and wayfinding signage, as we went through this process, became something that sort of bubbled up as important, it's just making sure people know how, one, that you're, hey, you're in the Stimson Avenue corridor, and it's this cool place, but also how you get to the university from there, how you get to Uptown from there, you know, all those connections were really important for us. So, when we got to the end of that first section, we had all these really great ideas, we had all these places, we want to create the Power of 10+. What are the first things we can do to implement those? So, we had the objectives, the strategies, our critical past strategies for this section, where we want to work really hard to do that public art or signage and branding elements, let's, we all kind of know intrinsically, as we've gone through this process, hey, this is a unique, interesting environment, there's a lot of different shops here, people live here, there's a microbrewery just off of it, there's a headstone place, you know, most people would look down, look at that and say, I don't know, but I mean, that's unique, I mean, you can't say there's too many commercial corridors that have that sort of display, you know, there's a hotel, there's a whole lot of amenities, let's start creating that image and defining that as this one wonderful, in a way, eclectic, fun place to hang out, and start getting people to understand, you know, it's a corridor, it's a whole district and environment we want to walk through, I mean, you have the Armory all, you know, kind of in the Mount Zion Baptist Church, kind of underpinning the other side, the history elements, so many things here, let's figure out how to get people moving up and down the corridor. So, we really felt strongly that that was something that should be done sooner rather than later. The other one is create those parklets I mentioned, the temporary seating areas, the outdoor dining areas, really important that, as, and I've told this story a few times with some people in the room, so I apologize to them, but I came back in February after we got kicked off, and spent a night here and walked up and down the corridor, I mean, on foot, from west to east, through Uptown, back up, then did it again the next day, and unfortunately for me, the temperature dropped 30 degrees between the two events, so it was a little colder on day two, but it's a great place to walk, it feels comfortable even at night, it's well-lit, it's safe, but there's not a lot of folks doing that right now. And so, the idea of these parklets and creating the art and the signage is, let's encourage people to start doing that more, I mean, there's wide sidewalks, it's really easy. I think I got from the intersection of State Carpenter and Stimson to the microbrewery in 10 minutes? I walk kind of fast, but still, you can do it, it was pretty easy. So, let's encourage that, let's get more people to take that kind of on. Just wanted to highlight this map before we go too much further, you can see these little dots, these colored dots, that's where we've identified places we think make sense for the culmination of all those placemaking elements, the ones we showed on the previous slides, you know, you can, you see the Power of 10+ starting to take effect, and kind of technicolor there, I guess, where it's, you know, you start to see how you can spread people throughout the corridor and create little pockets of interest for people as they go from west to east or east to west, and even kind of south following the river there. The other thing that this map highlights is three very specific development opportunity sites that we saw and investigated and did a little more research, these are in the plan, and we'll talk through them, but really, these are ones that we said, not only can we create, you know, this cool environment on the street, here's some good opportunities to say, hey, here's some, here's some things that we can do maybe to encourage the private market to contribute to this. And I want to make sure as we get into these to say, these aren't necessarily, this is the plan, this is going to happen, very much meant to be representative of what could be, you know, they're meant to generate ideas and get people talking, but really think that these three sites have a lot of potential. The first one, focus area one, is the site right next to the Armory and the Family Dollar, there's a big parking lot there. Part of our strategy that we'll get into in a little bit is maybe consolidating parking lots, we found that there's a lot of parking along the corridor, and so, when you do that, you might create more opportunities to do things with the old parking lots. We really wanted to focus on this one for a couple of reasons, one, it's near the Armory, and we know all the investment that's going on there and how important that is, but two, when you kind of, especially if you're coming up court, the Armory in this area really frames, it's like this perfect node, we have a picture of it, of one of the ones I took, staring from court right up to the Armory, it's this wonderful central node right there that really frames it, and so, let's take advantage of that, let's add a little more activity. This concept does that by creating some public space, potentially an amphitheater, really kind of reclaiming some parking if we don't need it anymore, into becoming more of a mixed-use, kind of a more family-friendly, fun environment, you can see in the front, really adding a lot of street furniture, places to sit along the new building that's there, and also, I think, some ping-pong tables, and that idea was something we saw in Indiana where there's a city that actually puts pool tables and ping-pong tables outside year-round in their public spaces. So, these are things that people are doing, it's just one more way to kind of create that fun activity, add some variety, add some more things for people to do, and people will play out there when it's 30, 40 degrees out, if they're just hanging out, because it's right next to some microbreweries and other things. So, we want to, I want to make sure we highlight those, because there's a lot of these little kind of details that maybe we don't think about on a bigger site plan that I think is really important to this study and how we went about presenting it. Another one. Another one, I mentioned, parking. How do we provide more parking while taking away parking? I think the answer is there's some bigger parking lots out there that could potentially become structured parking. So this is basically the intersection of Stimson and State. There's apartments behind where we're showing this. There's a big parking lot there, we think that could be embellished at some point in the future. Add structured parking there, so you're creating kind of a density of parking. You're also encouraging people to walk on the corridor, because now they have to get to their businesses. And it was really important for us, I mentioned earlier, the importance of preserving retail opportunities along the corridor, shopping. This parking deck, you can kind of, it's not working. If you look at kind of the first floor there, we've shown that as, and I've seen examples of this and worked on them, where you can line the fronts of these parking decks with storefronts. So basically, the first half of the lower portion of the deck is stores, and then you can have more parking above them. And again, you see the same themes we talked about earlier, outdoor play areas, outdoor seating, shading, things that encourage people to be on the corridor and hang out there. I think, I like to say, I call it adult loitering. We want people to hang out, we want them to go to dinner and then maybe hang out for a little bit, go around, you know, really experience the whole corridor and spend a lot of time there. That's really kind of one of the emphasis of this plan. The next one is, we just wanted to show where some mixed-use redevelopment could happen or residential development. So this site in particular, it's just the streets between the headstone shop that I mentioned earlier, taking that block, I think there's a lot of homes there that if they were to ever get redeveloped, it's a nice sort of, you know, land accumulation there where you could do something a little bit bigger, have maybe more condos, townhomes, those things, but want to make sure residences are part of this process, too. We want to preserve the retail, but also rooftops help fund retail, they help make sure that retail can be successful. So we want to make sure we included that as well. And this, this just, again, represents an idea of how that could happen. So here, you can see that we had two concepts for this one. Again, either townhomes, or the bottom slide really shows maybe mixed-use buildings with retail on the first floor. Could go either way, I think there's enough room here, there's enough assets here, it's a really good spot for this. Also, you come around that roundabout, this is kind of the eastern gateway to the corridor, so we wanted to do something here to embellish that as well, and really kind of help showcase that. So we're kind of hitting a number of the goals that we already talked about here with this concept. I think, before we go any further, that's a kind of a good stopping point to see if there's any questions, just because that, there's a lot to unpack in that section in the plan when you read through it, and also in the presentation. So, you know, it's just kind of the goals there, what we're striving for. Anything you'd like to maybe talk through a little bit more?
One question I would have, were you going to say something? One question I would have is that, with regard to that last slide where you showed two options, one was, would be townhouses, the other would be a mixed-use facility. It seems to me that if your goal is to try to move people up and down the corridor, rather than have the townhouses down on that far end, you'd want something that is more of a magnet that draws people toward that end, like other retail, which would then also help to support and enhance the other retail down at that end as well. Your thoughts about that?
Yeah, I don't disagree at all. I think it's always important to have that, that activity, like we talked about. I think we also, we didn't highlight it in the presentation this afternoon, but in the study, there was a retail gap analysis, which is, you know, how much retail can we support? Where's, who's shopping here, where are they coming from? I think we, in that analysis, it definitely demonstrated that more people could shop in this area. I think we were conscientious throughout this process of not overbuilding, though. I think if you look at a lot of commercial corridors that were built, probably 80s, 90s, even early 2000s, they got overbuilt with retail, and now you're dealing with vacancy issues. And so the point here was, because it's a narrower site, we think either option could fit, but we wanted to give, we wanted to give the, basically, as I do these, you know, I mentioned earlier, they're not set in stone, we like to give options. And so we're really just providing an option as opposed to saying it has to be one or the other. Any other questions? Or move back to the slide deck? Great, so kind of closing out this theme of creating the environment, we have corridor identification, wayfinding. We talked about this a little bit, but this is, this is really about coming up with branded signage and identification for the corridor, so it comes up and down. I think as we went through this process, what started above the surface was kind of this eclectic nature, a little bit of an artistic nature, music, art. I think that's a good starting point. We didn't delve into creating an actual branding strategy, that's something we're recommending to do, but really, that's what we saw. And so coming up with a wayfinding signage plan that really kind of symbolizes that is an important piece of this moving forward. And also enhancing safety and security, you know, when people know how to get somewhere, they feel a little bit easier walking around. It's, there's been a few studies on this, so that's something we felt really strongly about. This is just an example, and one of our critical path strategies, come up with that wayfinding signage plan. This one is from Slovenia. We liked this example because, for different reasons, had a similar situation where a bypass got built. People were kind of bypassing downtown and going right to a university campus for sporting events, in particular, youth tournaments were going on there a lot, and so they needed somebody to get them back to downtown, and this is one of the strategies they came up with. And it's, I want to say, this day and age with Google, is wayfinding from a directional perspective as important? Probably not, but I think it's the combination of helping people understand how to get around town, but also the branding piece of it. You know, these are very specifically branded for that community, and I think doing that in partnership possibly with Ohio University, some of the things they've done in a similar regard, so everybody knows that, hey, you're in a unique place, you're in a cool place, you're in Stimson Avenue. So that was the thought process with that one. Parking, parking always comes up when we do an effort like this. A lot of people would like to see more parking, I think. Certainly, a lot of parking issues, we heard this from a number of different folks, the no tow truck operation, I left that in there just to say, people, if they're not, they're going over the timeline, I guess some people would like to see them towed and enforced a little more. But, you know, there's a perceived lack of parking along the corridor, and I think really when we looked at it, we went out and counted every space, and there's a lot of parking per se, but it's mostly on private lots. And so therein, that opportunity we talked about earlier, that's kind of where that idea came from, is if we can repurpose some of that private parking to create the same amount of parking, but do it in a way that's more concentrated, you might create more opportunities for some of that redevelopment we talked about earlier. But really, when we went through this effort, we said, you know, there's a lot of parking here, I just, it's not very efficient, essentially. It's kind of, every lot has its own, and it's a little hard to see at this scale, but every, every little dot on there represents a parking lot of a different size. And so one of the critical path strategies we felt was really important was to come up and, come up with an in-depth parking analysis. The Com Plan also recommended this, that the City of Athens has, where go out there, really look at this holistically, look what an analysis like that would do differently than what we've already done would say. People would come in and observe the parking patterns, you know, when are these busy, when are they not busy? How can we get people to understand parking in one spot is just as easy as parking, you know, spread out? Working with business owners to help them understand that, hey, you know, this is going to work for everybody. And maybe coming up with some solutions like valet parking or other things, to let them know that, you know, you might lose parking right next to your building, but there's still going to be very convenient ways to get customers to get to you, especially if we do some of the other things. Experience is not retail. I highlighted this earlier while going through the main themes, but really, it's just about all the things we talked about in those renderings is, hey, we don't want people to come here and just go to one business or one restaurant and then leave. And this isn't unique to Stimson Avenue, this happens in commercial auto-oriented corridors all throughout the country. We want people to come here for a restaurant, but then stick around, go to an event, go to a festival, go to a pop-up shop, hopefully, maybe music, live music, view the art sculptures, all the things we talked about with that Power of Ten Plus. That's really what this is, and providing a little more policy direction on that. Mentioned the retail gap earlier, this is just what we saw, there's opportunity here. Retail gap's a little hard to explain succinctly, but essentially, it looks at two things. Amount that residents that live in these areas, and they're highlighted by red or green, how much money do they spend currently in your market? And then we do an estimate of how much they should spend based on consumer patterns. And you end up with one or two numbers. One's called a leakage, which are the numbers that are highlighted here in green, which basically means residents that live in those areas are going somewhere else to shop. So in this case, they're going somewhere else to buy motor vehicles. And so that is one example. Generally, when you see that, it represents an opportunity. I think the ones that we really wanted to highlight was in the extended trade area, that's the green area. There's a lot of people going somewhere else to shop and go to restaurants and those things. So the residents are here, and that's what that smaller red area shows, they're dining here. There's an extended area that we want to capture to help more people support the businesses, which gets back to kind of the theme of this whole thing, is what can we do to make Stimson Avenue that unique place that makes them want to choose here? And so that's, when we talk about experiences and not just retail, that's what we're talking about. Anybody can go to a restaurant, you know, nearby their house, we want to create an environment where they say, no, let's go there this Friday night, because there's all this other cool things happening. So some of the ideas we came up with regarding that, create this thriving hub for residents and visitors, do more small business support, pop-up events, farmers' markets, all those things, friendly, family-friendly events, that's a lot of where the ideas would, like for the hockey, or excuse me, the table tennis came from. Create other reasons for people to be here other than shopping, is really what we're going through here. Promote the landmarks and the historic preservation efforts, you know, the Armory, Mount Zion Baptist Church, all those things. And then even start celebrating that, have an annual placemaking week. I know that the space next to the armor got sort of redone in an effort like that, it was local-driven, people got together and, you know, came out and volunteered and rebuilt a lot of those things you see there now. Maybe make that an annual thing, we could pick a place all along the corridor and do that, so. Pedestrian-oriented development, I think there's a great start here. I mentioned the sidewalk improvements, the wider sidewalks, the landscaping's gone in, let's keep that going, create some avenues for bike and pedestrian connectivity. Again, it's creating that connection from east to west, look at a comprehensive corridor network, maybe some other paths. One of the things we heard through this process is there might be people, there might be paths like alleys or old railroad ties where people walk now that aren't formalized, maybe we look at formalizing those, creating more ways for pedestrians to traverse the corridor, essentially. Look at the B2D zoning for the corridor, just maybe establish some metrics and things that we can build into the code that we'll talk about in a little bit, on how we can get there, and what that means from a code perspective to encourage these things. And then just make it seamless and efficient. We want people to be, I said it earlier, I felt very comfortable walking around, let's really promote that, emphasize that, and ensure it. Flood plane mitigation, this one didn't come out of our stakeholder meetings, it wasn't brought up as much, but working with staff and, you know, talking a little bit more through it, realized a significant amount of this is in the floodplain. And so there will be some mitigation needed if these redevelopment projects happen, so we wanted to build in at least an awareness into this plan that that's out there, so when you start marketing the corridor, people just know, we don't want, developers especially do not like surprises, and so we felt this very strongly, we wanted to highlight this, and we think so much of that, that we made it a critical path strategy to develop some flood mitigation and prioritization list, basically come up with some predetermined ideas on how the development community can get in there and do these things. These aren't unknowns, it's just really about promoting the programs that are out there or the regulations, you know, making sure you build your height above the flood levels and all those things. But having a program basically that's devoted to showing that off to developers when you start working with them. High land costs, I won't go through all these again, since we highlighted them earlier, but really just ways to combat the higher land cost being, basically, the market is being inflated because, you know, people can go out there and build apartments pretty easily and make a good return on it, and so that might make land values a little higher than it would be normally for someone trying to do a retail business or a different kind of business. So wanted to make sure we put some thought on that. We looked through it, in the plan, you'll see, we go through and sort of dissected every property in the corridor study area, by how much property taxes they generate per square foot, and also their assessed values. Kind of, we do this just so we get an idea of what's out there, and sure enough, I think multifamily was pretty high, commercial was pretty high, all the things we expect, but yeah, definitely kind of confirmed our thought process there as we did the data analysis. Multifamily's demanding a higher rent based on assessed values, and it's just a higher land cost. So what we heard was sort of verified through that effort, so we went through an analysis, we picked three different sites, and basically said, all right, what does this really mean from a development perspective? What is a kind of a pseudo-pro forma, I didn't get too far in depth on that, but wanted to know what some costs were, and really what it meant for, if you do something sort of like a TIF, what that could mean in terms of providing assistance when you get that developer in for a use you really want, and the market is not there to help support them, they can't make their pro forma work. Here's some ideas on what that means from a assessed value perspective, and how you can maybe help offset some of that cost. I'm sorry, did you have something?
I was just saying, this is super important. Honestly, this is the, this is the rub for all of the redevelopment challenges that we have for Stimson Avenue, is how do you make the numbers work, given, you know, current land costs? And so, yeah, I think, I think you're spot on.
Yeah, and so I think what we did with these three scenarios is show that there's assessed value to be gained with these types of redevelopment, and that's where you can start to think about how you encourage developers to do that and offset some of their high land costs. So that was really important for us, so much so, we got to a critical path strategy on this one, we really think exploring the creation of a TIF district along the corridor is very important, and something that staff and cities officials should start looking at near term. This is just an example of the TIF analysis. We did a couple, we kind of, we basically just looked at the whole study boundary, which is what this slide represents, and said, all right, just organically, how much assessed value would go over time? We did this by comparing the 2019 assessed value year to 2022. Came up with sort of an average percentage of increase for per property, and it bore out to, you know, there's some significant, even over a 10-period time, you could realize almost $660,000 worth of just pure organic growth into a TIF fund. That's based on a couple of other things, if you go this route, state statutes allow you to do this. You can collect 75% of the new value if the school district isn't part of that process, up to 10 years. And so just to kind of explain where that came from, that's why we have that 75% number. If, you know, the school district didn't want to participate, you could still do 10 years and at least create, generate some funding over that period to help pay for certain infrastructure improvements and all those other things that TIF allow you to do. This slide is, if you did work with a school district and they agreed to the version where you can do this for 30 years, and you get 100% of the new assessed value, it goes into the fund, it would go up to almost $3.8 million in over a 30-year timeframe. Just to also highlight, we built in some checks into our model where certain properties were built from 2019 to 2022, which showed a much bigger average than the 4% or 2.8% that we showed. So we pulled those out, just so you know, to sort of balance this out. We didn't want to have those included in there and really throw off the numbers. So this, this we feel is a pretty good representation of just organic assessed value growth over a 30-year period. Those are, those are kind of heavy numbers slides, is there any questions on how we came up with these numbers? Great. Mentioned those development examples earlier, this is just how those bore out, the three examples. The multi-story building we talked about earlier, for instance, right now, you could see about $100,000 increase, just net over those properties, if they stay the way they were. If you were to do the redevelopment that we proposed, you would see over 10 years, if you went that route, it could grow $580,000 plus dollars, and then over 30 years, you could see $2 million of new increment for that project alone. And so I think we really just want to highlight this to demonstrate with TIF, you know, how that could really build, especially the difference between organic growth versus actual redevelopment projects. I think that's a lot of what fuels development, or excuse me, increment increases in TIFs and this, you know, you're almost getting to that 30-year period in one project at $2 million, and the whole boundary at $3.8 million. So we kind of wanted to highlight that, just to show, this is really how TIF can be used So we kind of wanted to highlight that just to show this is really how TIF can be used to help fund some of those improvements we talked about earlier and offset land costs. So I think the crux of, of especially what this body looks at is zoning. I mentioned earlier, I was, I was staff planner for 15 years, so spent a lot of time working with planning commissions, doing zoning ordinance amendments and working through that process and also knowing that, you know, sometimes you run into a brick wall with a zoning code if it hasn't been updated in a while. You want to have these cool things happen, but maybe your code just doesn't allow it. And so what we did was come up with, after we heard that some of these issues were there, we, we basically looked at this and said, all right, we have this transect map, you know, there's a tool available called an overlay zone. So we thought it made some sense to at least come up with recommendations that if you want to move forward with a zoning overlay district, here's some things that make sense to make that work for what we're proposing. So we feel strongly about this. I think it's another critical path strategy. It's something, it's just, all, all zoning codes need to be updated from time to time anyway. And so I think if you want to encourage this sort of environment, it's a good impetus to start doing that. So essentially, I mentioned it earlier, with high land costs, it's about predictability. For me, it's, it's so much easier to work through the process with a developer if they have some ability to understand what the requirements are. They might not like all the requirements, but at least if they know they're consistent, they can work through those and build those into their pro forma. So that, that's a lot of what this is about, what these ideas are about, creating that environment, but also creating predictability. We can go through these in as much detail as everybody'd like per category. Essentially, each one that I'm about to present follows one of these code, these colors on the map, provide some guidance for that. So for the single-family zone, pretty much maintaining what's here, what we did was just kind of suggest some revised either architectural standards. The idea here is make sure everybody has a porch, has some, something interesting if you're going to do new single-family residential development, the areas that we've identified, just to make it look like it's part of the corridor. Not going too far down that road, just making sure there's some projection changes, it has some window accents, whether it be a dormer or a pediment over the window, that's kind of up to the designer. Just want to make sure it encourages something more than a, a flat wall essentially. And then also some lot standard recommendations. In this case, looking at a 4,000-foot square foot lot to encourage maybe smaller development, we heard a little bit about, you know, just attainable housing, workforce housing. So we're, we're recommending this just so that we have some flexibility to create smaller units that might be a little more affordable. Multifamily zone, duplexes. So we had a multifamily zone on here. I think there's a couple of subsets of that. One of them is duplexes. This could be homeownership, this could be rental, but want to, again, wanted to provide some guidance on that concept just because there's some lots out there I think could become duplexes, probably couldn't become much more than that. And it also, you know, depends on land assemblage. Developer might be able to get two or three lots next to each other, but not necessarily enough to do a whole apartment complex. So this is just one more way to provide some variety, sticking with that eclectic theme that we heard all, all up and down Stimson Avenue, but also making sure we have some way to, to include these. Townhome zone, this is basically to implement that development project we've talked about a couple of times now. Making sure, again, these, these townhomes are nice, they have some embellishment on the front facades, especially if we want to encourage people to go up and down the corridor. I think that's very important, that they have porches, they have activity, or they just look nice as you're driving down the corridor. I think that, that's really the heart of what we're trying to do here. Let's get people up and down the corridor. Multifamily zone apartments, there, there's some examples out there of this, so what we wanted to do is come up with some standards that sort of codify, I think what Athens is already doing, making sure they have porches, they have windows, they have facade projection changes, again, avoiding blank, a lot of this is about just avoiding blank walls that are just boring to look at and make sure that we're creating that, that environment we want to do. One that we like to recommend is that apartment buildings, especially in an urban environment, have interior access, which basically means your front door's access from a hallway, not the outside. I just think for security purposes, for a lot of reasons, this is the way the market's going anyway, but it just makes for a nicer look, to be honest. It's more of an architectural thing for us. Looking at multi-zone apartments, just, just a couple of other things, we want to have to make sure that you have large-scale family development, you could have the front door features, all these things. Mixed-use zone, this is, this is pretty much what's happening in Uptown. We just wanted to provide some guidance since there is a mixed-use zone there. Usually retail on the first floor apartments and condos above it, again, providing some architectural guidance is where, where I think the heart of this changes from maybe the current codes is just making sure we have interest, making sure that we have buildings that look nice. The one that's really important for me, and this one, is making sure that there are windows that are on the first floor along a major corridor that are visible. I think we're trying to create activity along the street, but we also want people to see all the cool stuff going on in the businesses in a building like this. So you, as somebody walks by, you want to have enough window space to make sure they can see in there and see fun things happen. And so that, that's a really important element of this.
Just a comment on this to our, our group, you know, to remind all of us up here, we currently do not have architectural standards in the city of Athens in our zoning, other than in the Historic Preservation District. And that's an overlay zone, similar to what they're recommending here is to do an overlay zone that, you know, basically modifies existing zoning versus throwing existing zoning out. But what they're proposing is that we, we add some elements of an architectural review board function into that zoning in order to achieve these goals. And that's a big lift for Athens because, you know, we're basically going to go and say, hey, your building has to look this way. And there'll have to be people that will have to, you know, be part of that, that architectural review. Doesn't have to be super hard, we can do it with staff, you know, doesn't have to be, you know, some, you know, Stepford or, or something like that, but, but it is something that is different for Athens.
Yeah. I thank you for bringing that up. I, I did men, one of the reasons I'm highlighting the architectural features so much is because of what Andy just mentioned. And when we talked about this with staff, in my experience, writing these and also implementing them, you can do it in a way that staff can interpret them pretty easy. You don't have to be an architect to do it. You know, it's pretty easy to tell if a building changes, you know, its height for a little bit of it, three feet, or has enough window space. And we were very specific in these recommendations to make sure that, we, we know that this is something staff can implement pretty easily without, just by being able to read the code and look at the plans. And I did meant to mention that earlier and I neglected to, I'm sorry, Andy.
No, it's okay. It's, 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 it's not that we can't do it, it's that, you know, when we go to do it and we put this in place, you know, there's a certain segment of the, of the, of the community that'll say, why, why, you know, why are you putting those rules in place?
Yep, yep, makes sense.
That's, that's, that's development unfriendly, but in actuality, it, it's promoting development because we're trying to, to, you know, create the space to do the redevelopment.
Yep. And create that predictability I mentioned earlier too, of a developer knows this is what the standard is and they meet it, they know they'll get approved and, you know, it takes a little bit of ambiguity out of, for them, which is causing. Did you have something, Mary?
I do. I want to give Commissioner Bain a chance to ask any questions that she might have, I know that you have a hard stop at 1:00, so.
1:10.
Okay. Just want to give you that courtesy.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing this. Kristen Jones. Get them next.
Okay.
Neighborhood commercial zone, I mentioned this in some detail earlier, but this is all about preserving retail space on the corridor, making sure shopping still exists on the corridor. We provided for that, it's also a buffer, but also want to make sure those buildings look nice too and have the right setbacks and the right areas. So that's a lot of what this is about. Industrial, I mentioned we want to preserve the industrial. If new buildings do get built in that, those areas, we want to encourage that, we want to encourage jobs, but we want to make sure that they have a look and feel similar to what we're going for. So again, this, this one's more about architectural standards, much more pulled back from probably some of the other recommendations and the others transect zones. But some simple things that I, make all the difference to me, not allowing just flat, not colored CMUs, concrete masonry units, you know, the gray cinder blocks essentially. You know, there's a lot of ways and they're not that much more expensive where you can just have them dyed when they're being cast or baked, I should say, so that they have a color to them or a little more interest. Or you can paint them. You can do a lot of things to create visual interest that, especially in industrial buildings with now with tilt-up and all the other things they're doing that, that really help create a nice environment, but don't really, you know, they're still industrial buildings, so I want to make sure I highlighted that for everyone. Then we have this recreation commercial zone, really thought, you know, some of these opportunities and talking through this, there's a place that maybe provides some more amenities, whether that be, you know, public-private spaces, could be entertainment spaces. The bowling alley came up a lot, so we, we want to make sure we have some, some thoughts of that. This really is a place to create sort of an entertainment anchor near the corridor on, if, if that opportunity should arise. So again, wanted to have some architectural standards there. Didn't want to highlight the permitted uses in this one. This is one of the few where we're being more restrictive probably than all the other zones and that was intentional. We, if you're going to do something like this, we want to make sure it gets used for these sort of things, for this sort of use. So really, it's indoor/outdoor recreation and amusement. We did provide some retail and restaurant as an accessory use. So like a, a lot of modern bowling alleys will have a little restaurant inside or a little bar or something like that. So that, that's really what's there, but really in this zone, want to make sure we preserve that. The final one is that open space zone along the river. I think this is a great asset, we just sort of wanted to codify that it stays that way. It adds so much to the community, it adds so much to what we're trying to achieve here. Let's make sure that that stays there. So that, that's kind of the, the nickel tour of the plan. I didn't go through everything that's in there for, I didn't want to go through every detail, but that, that's the highlights, those are the big things, those are the goals we're trying to achieve. Thank you so much for, you know, meeting with me this afternoon and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the commissioners?
Let me, let me ask, so if, how would you answer the question that this overlay zone to, to a property owner, that this overlay zone is going to financially cost me because I'm so much more limited in terms of what I can do? Is that a fair question?
Yeah, I think it's a fair question. I think that was something that'll get asked. I think really and truly, an overlay zone works, you can only add to, you can't take away from in zoning for the most part, except maybe setbacks. You can provide more flexibility. The idea here and the reason we're presenting is an overlay zone is if, if you're, say you have a house here now, it'll still be allowed to be a house because you're underlying zoning district's still intact. It's if you ever redevelop it, that's when these overlay standards would kick in. And so there, there's a couple of mechanisms there. One, the base zoning is going to stay in place. Two, they would be considered, if the zoning did change, legal non-conforming, and so it wouldn't really change them anyway. They'd still be allowed to carry on their use as long as they maintain that over time, years and years. And that, that's something that's already baked into all zoning ordinances, including the cities. And so it, it doesn't really say you can't, the way we're proposing it, it doesn't really say you can't do anything on your property that you don't do now. It's really more about should it ever get redeveloped, reused, this is what happens. And I think we would write it in a way that if, if people wanted to continue to have single-family homes, for instance, it's still in that zone that we've created. And we try to be very purposeful in where we put these to not necessarily retread or redo anyone's zoning district with a few exceptions.
Can you talk about some of those flexibilities that would be added that actually would lessen? I, I think we're mainly talking about parking, setbacks and lot size, right?
Yeah, I mean, so for instance, if somebody did buy a couple of lots and consolidate them, a duplex unit that we're proposing now, I think the cumulative lot size minimum would be less now than it is currently for two units. And so that flexibility allows you to build a duplex unit on a smaller property is, I think is a really good flexible we're trying to.
You may have to meet this architectural standard and that might, you know, be more restrictive, but you also can have a lot size that is smaller than currently you'd be allowed to have right now. So there, there's that flexibility.
Yeah, and the lot width too is another example on this slide that I'd point out is, I don't, right now, you couldn't put two units on two properties over 50 feet. Now you can have two units on a 50-foot wide lot, 25/25. So that, that's really the intent. Yeah, it's a great point, is this provides more flexibility to do these kinds of things, which not all property owners might see it that way at first, but I do think it actually raises your property value over time because a developer, even if you want to redo it yourself, you have more options essentially.
Is there anybody else who's here representing yourselves or an organization? I believe that the mic over here might be live and if you want to come up to the mic and introduce yourself and ask any questions at Structure Point, please feel free.
I just have a point of clarification for the record. Ohio Southeast did not fund the plan, Buckeye Hills Regional Council funded the plan. Papri Dunn from Buckeye Hills, who's here representing them, is the project.
Let me screw that up. Since I've been talking to Ohio Southeast about so much stuff recently that I named the wrong entity, I apologize.
Thank you, Buckeye Hills.
You can if you want.
This is yours.
Oh, wait a minute, that's my chair.
I was going to. You know, and really I just want to know where this, this document will live, where I'll be able to access it and just kind of take a better look at it. That's, that's all, that was the only question I had today.
We will post it on the city website and have a link that we'll share. Whatever, that's something, so far we haven't done that because it's been a work product, but now that we have a, you know, finished product, we, we need to have it available.
Yeah, I think, depending on today's conversation, there may be some changes, modifications, things that we just tweaked. So we, we didn't want to have it out there 100% till we, we had the final, at least draft version for the, for the public to react to.
And then final approval for all Rise Ohio projects run through Buckeye Hills, since we are the funder for these projects. So Buckeye Hills can also be reached out to, to get access to some of these final documents.
Me and I have cards.
I don't have a card. Always.
So I'm Rob Delak. I live on Morris Avenue, which is the street just north of Stimson. I'm a resident, but advocate for a lot of the things you're talking about here, really liked the proposal. I think there's some great ideas here and I didn't see anything that I really didn't like. One thing I'm curious about though is the B1 or sort of neighborhood zoning, I think you're proposing as a buffer on the north side. Can you describe how that's different than the B2D you're, you're proposing for the south side of the corridor, what some of those differences are and?
Yeah. The B2D would allow much more high, taller buildings, much more dense buildings, mixed-use buildings. We're actually proposing that, you know, on that strip, that commercial zone we called it, we don't have those, that available for those property owners to create that buffer, in particular intensity of use, I guess is the best way to say it. We want to make sure that they, they stay one- to two-story tall buildings as they predominantly are now. They don't encroach into the neighborhood, doesn't necessarily extend the residential apartment buildings north of Stimson in that location because we wanted that buffer between the existing neighborhood and, and the road essentially. And so it's kind of a, it's a zoning and a physical limitation. So it's what we would call a belt and suspenders approach to make sure there is, there is a maintained and predictable buffer between that neighborhood and Stimson Avenue.
So one to two floors potentially on that north side.
Right.
Would that be possible to have an apartment above a retail in that situation, or is that more restrictive than?
Yeah, the way we proposed it, it would be, we would think it would be retail and probably professional office. And then we, because we were pretty purposeful in saying we don't necessarily want to have apartments on that, that stretch of Stimson Avenue. There's plenty of properties to do those kind of efforts, there's other places that probably better fit and, and to create that buffer, we want to make, make sure. So I think what we would look at is not having that as a permitted use.
I guess my reservation is, I don't really have, I'm not opposed to the idea of B2D on the north side of the street, even, even though I live right there, I think it would be fine. But my one concern is that if you limit the development on the north side of the street like that, economically it might not happen. And so allowing a little more flexibility there, maybe with a city review or a planning commission review to allow on case-by-case basis, some additional, more intensive mixed-use on the north side, may allow or enable some developments that we may not see redevelopment unless it's the right economic mix. And I think if we limit it too much, we may not get that.
Yeah, no, I think, I think it's a fair point. It's something we can talk through with, with staff a little more. I think what we were doing is a kind of, you know, basing this on what we had heard up until this point. I think that's something to think through. You know, preserving chances for retail to make sure retail's there is important too when we think through this and kind of looking at the corridor as a whole and saying, do we want that one type of development available throughout the whole corridor is where we felt we didn't want to get? And that, that's how we got to these conclusions. But I, I don't think looking at that flexibility is, is a bad option, I think. And I should also say, you know, the city, when they, they move forward with this, if they choose to, it's, it's not, we have recommendations in here as guidelines, there will be a, a different, more thorough zoning process to develop the actual standards and really think through a lot of those kind of, some of those more detailed nuance issues too.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Just to add quickly to that, you know, one of the things we were going through this thought process with this whole plan, Mr. Delak, to your point, is, you know, the interesting thing with B2D is that a developer can go up four stories and now you're kind of creating a canyon effect on Stimson Avenue and probably more importantly, on the eastern section of Stimson Avenue where the, the street is basically on grade with your neighborhood. You know, now all of a sudden, if you have four-story buildings, the, the environmental shadow effect that's going to take place along there, I think would be disruptive of those that live within your neighborhood, within the R1 neighborhood. You know, it changes clearly a little bit more as you go further west on Stimson Avenue, probably more importantly at the block of Palmer to State Street, where on that north side, you know, you do have your steps that go on up to Montrose, you know, so you have, there's opportunity to maybe develop a little bit higher and you're not going to create that same view shed shadow effect that would take place. But again, your point's an interesting one, but we put a lot of thought into it.
Yeah, the, the comment I, we'd heard a while and I hadn't rethought it till just now is people being on a second or third or fourth story potentially looking down at[1729.08]
your point's an interesting one, but we put a lot of thought into it.
Yeah, the comment I, we'd heard a while, and I hadn't rethought it till just now, is people being on a second or third or a fourth story, potentially looking down at someone else's backyard on that part, that came up, too, and we wanted to avoid those kind of conflicts, essentially.
I'm sorry, once the clip starts talking, then I can just get other questions. And I didn't introduce myself, so I'm Peter Kotzes. I reside at One Bryan Road in Athens, and I was a business owner on the, on Stimson Avenue for 20-some years. Been in this community for close to 50 years. And so, I own property on Stimson Avenue, in this area that you're talking about right now. Those B3, that B3 zoning, it butts right up against an R1, so there's already a 25-foot buffer that I can have nothing but parking, you know, on the backside of it, between me and that, and that R1, which I think used to be an R2, because there is some, you can see some duplexes and things on Morris Avenue that would lead me to, well, you go back into the 70s when KFC went into that, that location, and everybody started smelling chicken. That's when they decided that they needed to make some more changes in that situation. So, what I worry about is when you start to do additional setbacks, and we're already dealing with a 25-foot in the back, and also the price of the property and how hard it is to run a retail business. I mean, I had a conversation with another property owner on the street, and they were thinking about leveling a rental house and just doing parking, reducing their taxes, and they could, they could rent those spaces out 100%.
Sure.
Every year. And so, I mean, I would say that if you have a situation where you're starting to limit the height, because the other, the other issue that you have is when AEP came through and did the new power lines with the, with the Stimson redo, there already is vertically, when you go up, it's at least 17 to 20 feet back that we can't build because we can't, you know, because right now you have zero on the front, but you can't go up because the lines are there. So, I mean, everything on those, those properties on the north side are somewhat, are somewhat squinched in, and now if we start to limit the ability that you can't go up three, three and a half stories, you know, I wonder what will, you know, is it just going to be the parking lot for all, everything that's going to happen on the south side?
Yeah, I think, it's something we did talk about was if just the parking lot is a permitted use on its own, or an accessory use only. Something I think is another, one of those details we'll dig into when we're actually writing the zoning ordinance. To your point, I think it's a good one, is how viable is something if you have too many setback restrictions and other items? I think it's one of those, you know, whenever you do an effort like this, and particularly when you start digging into the zoning stuff, it's that there's always going to be those friction points, is trying to figure out what's that best kind of middle grounds there. And so, but, we went into that with, again, this is what we saw in the corridor, and so it's not final yet. These, it doesn't necessarily be exactly what's in this plan. These are the recommendations that we came up with. So, that's one of those detail items, I think, when you really start digging into a zoning ordinance amendment, you can work through in more detail, but I think it's a great point. You don't want to limit options.
And I, and I also just wanted to mention two of the other business property owners that I talked to on the street. Nobody else had, had heard about this. So, I mean, I understand that you did do an engagement process. I'm just not talking to the right people, because none of us seem to have been engaged in this process.
Yeah, we reached out to a number of business owners through contacts and had a few stakeholder meetings. I think this process also did evolve over time. It was really, it started as more of a market prospectus, kind of a, what opportunity is here and what didn't? And so, as we got into it, we sort of reframed it, and it kind of, some of the ideas sort of grew based on what we were hearing. And so, that's one of the reasons we're here today, is because of the nature of the process. We want to make sure we start getting it out and having those reactions now.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? We're losing Commissioner Bain. Okay. Any other comments from the Structure Point team? Okay. Great, that concludes the presentation. Really appreciate you coming out.
Yeah, absolutely. My pleasure.